This work session is required by Kentucky statute to be open and transparent. So we're meeting our responsibility under Kentucky statute. I have an opening statement to make. Probably everybody understands that we're in tough times in the coal fields of eastern Kentucky and in the coal fields of west Virginia. Many of our families have been hard hit and they're out of work and they have difficult economic conditions in Pike County and in eastern Kentucky. We deserve to live in a county like people do in other places. A child born here should be able to have the same quality of life as anybody else in any other section of Kentucky in our country. The Lord has blessed us to be in an energy-rich county in coal and natural gas. And for decades, we have been able to provide our assistance based upon money that we got back from state coal and mineral severance tax. A way of life that has a quality of life that has been enhanced by this fiscal court and others as the years have gone by. Nowadays, the war on coal has killed eastern Kentucky and west Virginia. Obama, Environmental Protection Agency, has put regulations on our back where we cannot get permits to mine coal or cannot market the coal. That combined with two mile winters and made tough market conditions have caused our coal production to fall off its lowest level since 1960s. Because of this, we're facing a crisis here in your local county government. Due to the projected severance tax revenue declined in 2013 and 14, we're facing a shortfall of 3.3 million. Just to show how bad it's gotten for us, for the first time since records have been kept for around 25 years by the state of Kentucky. Pike County, Kentucky is no longer the number one producer of coal in the Commonwealth. Union County, a small county in western Kentucky coal fields, one single mine named Riverview produces more coal than all the operations operating in Pike County today. That's how bad it's gotten. The situation in your county government is no different than that of any Pike County family sitting around their kitchen table trying to figure out how they're going to pay their bills, figure out how they're going to balance their budget. We all have bills to pay and we have to figure out ways to survive. None of this is by our own doing, but it falls in our families' laps and ours to try to survive and try to fix it. The burden to address the budget shortfall is on the backs of elected members of your Pike County Fiscal Court, made up of the body sitting here today. Together, we must have the courage and political will to do what is right and we must, in order for our county government to function in the future and to keep Pike County progressive county as it is today. We must have the courage and political will to do what is right for the people that we represent. The decisions we must make are bigger than any one person or bigger than your fiscal court as a body. This budget will affect every man, woman, and child in Pike County. Let us have your ideals, get in touch with your magistrate, they have an office in your district, and let us know any concepts or ideals that you have that would help us as we continue to work and to come with a balanced budget. Because we must do that, that is the constitution, it is the law. State governments, county governments, and city governments have to have a balanced budget. We're not like the federal governments who can start up the printing press and they can operate on a deficit. We cannot do that. We ask you for your prayers as we face this and confront the burden that we have upon us to do what is right. There are no easy or simple answers to the solution. We took, and we got a PowerPoint we'll do next, but with God's help, we will try to do the right thing. We have a PowerPoint now, and I'd ask Jeannie if you all didn't bring yours with us so we won't have to crane her neck looking up at the top or turn around. You can follow the PowerPoint. Jeannie, if you've got that, the magistrate didn't bring their packets, give it to them and we will start it and they won't have to turn around. As you see the headlines here, some of you can see it, some can't, so make sure the one can't has got a copy of it so they can follow it and write it here. So you see that we're not the only county. Every county in the coal fields of eastern Kentucky has a problem. There's a headline from their local paper. You see that we know that Floyd County has a $16 million budget and they have a $600,000 deficit. We know that. They got the problem. They don't have the size budget we got. They don't have a $35 million budget. They got a 16 million. Letcher County, a small county about the size of Floyd County, they got an even little smaller budget, but they got a $600,000 deficit. The small county of Knott County, population probably 10,000 to 12,000, only has 900,000. Now imagine that. There are no ways. State's already into their county. Talked to Judge Weinberg, talked to Judge Thompson before he left that office. They don't know what they're going to do. None of these do. West Virginia counties, you all read some of the west Virginia news. You know how bad it is in west Virginia. The local governments in those counties that produce coal, they get severance tax and having the same problem. Now why is that? That's because the war on coal only ended up on us in eastern Kentucky and the state of west Virginia. And the next one, they'll tell you right there, the war on coal, the Environmental Protection Agency, the lack of markets due to the killing of markets, waivers granted to the states of Virginia, Pennsylvania, Ohio. We're only going to have in the future in eastern Kentucky is deep-mined coal, as we know. Next, we have to show just how bad it is. You know you have a figure of 34 million tons being produced in this county? And then you look at the projected, the facts is it's 12 million tons, a decline. Now imagine, that's how bad it is. That's the reason these people out in the county behind, next to their kitchen tables are trying to figure out how to survive. We got thousands of coal miners out of work. 3,887 people leave Pike County to go into another state or another county to work every day. And then the coal mine that shut down over in Knott County, 600 employers by Arch Coal, one of the 600 employers or thereabout was from Pike County. Small county, didn't have certified miners. They had to harm over from here. And we are, so that is, we'll go to the next one. Coal production. You don't have to, if you want to read charts or graphs, some people don't, but it's easy to tell. Starts up here, goes down here. That means, and look, 27.6 in 211. And we got another chart to show you what it is in 212. Production in the 15 east Kentucky counties, 15 percent. Our county is the largest producer, so we get hit the worst. Severance tax revenue is down, decreased the bottom drop dropped out the last quarter. It dropped out of the severance tax, at least mineral tax and severance tax, 39 percent. That's what we're sitting around this table trying to figure out what to do because we have that size deficit. It's just this very, very, right here, 39 percent drop. Then you have a green and red. Now you all read in the paper where the city's talking about, we're stopping jobs because we won't bring a project up. This right here, you can't read it on your monitor, but you have it here in the press here today, they'll be giving a copy of this. Folks, there was 50 projects passed by the legislature. Right after the legislature stopped, they went signing down. About a week after that, Judge Hayes, we got the call and the notice that projection was only 35 of those would be funded in this fiscal year. Guess what? It didn't go, but just a very few months later, they called us and said, "The projection is 19." 19 out of 50. That's how quick it dropped. And the city hauling, "We're stopping their jobs because it's a no issue. They're not any money." Folks, on your 19 listed here, two-thirds of them, the money's already out. We had a groundbreaking up for, on a road up in magistrate Murphy's district, which he had worked so hard to get, and the water district had worked so hard to get. Funding for those people up there that hadn't had water and we've been hauling in there to them for years. With that money, it's already out. We was at the groundbreaking last month. So there's no money. When the city tells we're doing anything at all, it's not factual. There's no money at all. Let me give you the other news. Got a call yesterday. Looks like now we're down to number 18. And I know with the research that Charles Carlton done and he knows the industry, the energy industry, he's been in it. He has the ability to read it. And it's going to continue to go down. So that's a problem that we got, and this is an indicator, and it just got green for go and red for stop. And the red for stop is, the last one we looked at was the percentage. We go to the next one, and that tells you that the western Kentucky coal production is up. Western Kentucky is in the Illinois coal basin. In the Illinois coal basin, we're blessed in eastern Kentucky and in western Virginia and in southern west Virginia, McDowell County, Buckhannon County, Virginia, Pike County, Kentucky, to have metallurgical coal. Folks, it's nowhere else in the country. It's not in western Kentucky. They just got the power plant. They got the steam coal. And you know, we talk about somebody from Frankfurt looking east at us every once in a while. You got five Alcoa plants from Louisville West. They haul their mineral, they got to have metallurgical coal from up in this direction. They didn't put the plants up here for us, they put them in western Kentucky. That coal can't serve those plants. That's the reason Kentucky is listed as aluminum, that they smelt more aluminum than any of the states in this country. It's because we have this metallurgical coal. That coal is selling last week, Charles told me, for $103. That's the coal that China's got to have. That's the coal that the other countries in Europe has got to have. They've got to smelt the aluminum, they've got to have the iron ore, the steel to produce with. And that's what they've got to use, that's in their formula. So we will have the deep mines in the future, but that shows our coal production down and it gives a figure of 4,068, and there are more than that today. These are all figures. More than that out of jobs in eastern Kentucky are hurting, wonder about if they can save their truck. A miner makes $85,000 average salary. Now they got, they're living on unemployment with the Congress in Washington still made it and no extinction on, no extinction at all on unemployment benefits. And they can't take the benefits anyway and pay their mortgage on their house, the payments on their car, the payments on wife's vehicle, and their stretch truck. So yes, we are hurting because of what I've told you. I have to present and had to present to this body a balanced budget. I did that, but it's simple. I just figured it up, the budget office tells me the figure, they come up 17 percent, I said, "Cut across the board." That wasn't going to pass. I know that we're not going to do that. We can't have progressive county if we do that. And that's what we're doing here today. We're starting a process to come up with a balanced budget. We have next on here than this. This is going to shock everybody in this room as it shocked us yesterday. We was provided a certified copy by the clerk of the city of Pikeville. Once we cut this budget, the little small county seats of Pikeville is going to have a larger budget than this body sitting right here today has to operate their little small city with than we will have for the first time in the history of this county. Now that's what we are facing. The figures are right here, look on the board. If you've got that up, Jeannie, have them to pull it up on the board after we got this right here. Right there it is. Today, we got a $35 million budget. We take the 3.3 million thereabout out, then we come, then take their budget and look at it. Folks, they got a $17 million general fund budget. We got a seven. Now imagine that. Imagine what this court went through when we had a, when this, all of this, the Wall Street fell and then the coal business started going down. The last budget we did, the last budget we did. Remember all of the talk and the rhetoric, what the paper wrote on us? When we was trying to fill a hole of starting out with 3.1 million, ended up 2.1 million. We cut off jobs. I'm not going into that. Judge Hayes, very briefly, is going to tell you about that in the meeting. We represent 90 percent of the people in the county, and the county seat have a bigger budget than we got. So something is wrong. Something's wrong with the business community. Look what they, come back, and we had a meeting with them yesterday. We had a meeting and shared this with them. I hope they were shocked as much as we was because they could understand that we got 90 percent of the people to represent and they've only got 10 percent in the city and we want a progressive city. I live here, I love Pikeville. We work with them on everything. We partner on about every project we do, we partner with the city of Pikeville. But we represent the county. We represent these people. And I've reminded the city that they have a, what they call, there is an occupational tax. But who pays it? The people outside the city limits that come in here to work. The bedroom community is out in Pike County. And we pay it. I paid it. I lived at Shelby Anna for years. I moved into the city. I paid it and I lived out there. So that is what's facing us. There's another figure on their budget. And I think that figure, I don't know what that, 2,176, what was that, Jeannie? Was that the excess they had?
The amount more than the county's budget.
That's that much more than the county's budget. That's 2,176,000 to 210. That's much more they'll have to serve their people in the city of Pikeville. We are, we represent those people in the city of Pikeville, same as the city does. We have that responsibility under the Kentucky constitution and other Kentucky statutes. So we represent the same people. We want Pikeville to be a progressive city as that it is. But there is something wrong with the system when you look at these figures. Next, we have a presentation by, just briefly, by Judge Hayes. He wants to talk to you about the last budget and what we had to do.
Actually, Judge, I'll be very brief because these magistrates have been considering this like we have for a number of weeks. All of them are very knowledgeable. They all know the situation that you've just described. And I believe with my whole heart, Judge, the majority of the people in Pike County not only know, but they appreciate the situation the county is in with its budget. Beginning two years ago, we started cutting personnel in this county. And we cut significantly two years ago. Last year, we continued that process. The people that this court represents want government to streamline itself. They want waste cut out of government. To use most of the, the layman's turn judge, they want the fat cut out of government. And this court has heard the people and this court has responded accordingly. Now we're faced with the same issue again. As Personnel Director for the last six years, I am intricately aware of the personnel situation in the county, as is this court. And we have cut in the last two years to the bone. There are a few jobs left that I could identify, and you all no doubt have identified, that we can make some further cuts without significantly affecting service. However, we're at the point, Judge, when we cut, we are in fact going to cut services. And let me say this, just like 17 percent, that is a cold, hard number, Judge. And as you said, I'm sure this court is not going to have a 17 percent across the board cut. That's not responsible government. But any cut is not a figure, it's not a position on a paper. A cut in personnel is a person. It's a family. It's neighbors. It's pain. As Roland Kaye said at the outset, "There's no good door to go through, Judge. Door A is bad, door B is bad. Whatever we do, it's not good and it will affect people. Not only our employees, but as we continue to find some cuts that this court may be able to find, that we can save money in this budget. However, in doing so with the heart of this court that I know exists, as I prayed to start this meeting, Judge, these are going to be hurtful. They're going to be hurtful to some people, to some families who are in the same position that these, all the other folks in Pike County who are hurting financially are. And so we need, the cuts with the meat cleaver are now over, Judge. We have to take a scalpel and cut very finely and in doing so realizing that we're going to hurt. And so I don't know that I need to add any more to that. This court, it's such a pleasure to work with people who are so concerned about people and who are so concerned about people programs and who are so aware and concerned about the services that people want to and expect. Services such as solid waste collection, garbage collection, the 800 miles of roads and the bridges that those roads cross, Judge, those kind of programs. Our Public Works Department, Judge, who's never had enough personnel, you know, those are all programs that are going to be affected. And so I'll just leave it with that. At such time as this court wants to hear from me my opinion about positions, I'll be, I will express them, not happily because it's an unhappy task, just as the task, Minister Robinson, that you all have laying before you. So with that, Judge, unless there's any questions, I'll yield back to you.
Any questions? If not, Rhonda, if you're John, if you want to make a statement. If not, we'll move on because I know you're going to have plenty of questions as we get into discussing the budget. Do you have any statement, Madam Treasurer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're just here to help.
That's correct. Mr. County Attorney, we have some options, I think, under the statute that the court knows about. You might remind the court there are options. And I might add that myself have not recommended any particular thing to be done to balance the budget. I estimated the budget at 17 percent across because that had to meet, had to meet what I was supposed to do as the chief executive of the county. We have no other recommendations. We're open on it, but we want to have all options. That's on the table, Mr. County Attorney, and you might just tell the court what they are.
Well, Judge, as I've indicated a couple of times over the last, I guess, two to four years, there are only a limited number of other revenue sources. We already had the hotel tax at the maximum rate. We already have the cable franchise at the maximum rate and it's been taken over to the state anyway, but we do get, still get the money back. The only other three revenue sources, this court, if they were so inclined, could adopt far districts and tax, which would replace the supplements that we now give the voluntary far departments. Probably couldn't, I don't, well, not probably, you could not get it passed in time for it to affect this year's budget because it goes on the property tax bills, which wouldn't come out till next year, so it probably wouldn't affect this year anyway. That would also apply to the insurance premium tax. You have to adopt it by about March the 10th in order to receive the benefits, to receive the benefits from that. By my calculations before, by comparing us to Platte County based on population with the 5.5 percent insurance premium tax, it would raise about 2.5 million, I believe was my recollection. And the other, only other alternative is an occupational tax, which the city of Pikeville has. Theirs is a 2 percent. By statute, the county would be limited to a 1 percent occupational tax. An occupational tax can be only a payroll tax on wages, or you can also include a net profits tax, which the city of Pikeville has. And actually, I believe the majority of counties that have adopted the occupational tax do include a net profits tax. But that is really the only other three alternative sources of revenue.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. We have had...
Judge, can I have just one question?
Yes, go ahead.
How much money can we raise with occupational tax?
Well, the, I'm going to defer to Rhonda on that. I think she's been working on that.
We're good.
You don't need that up here.
Based on what we've looked at right now, and this is really rough, so it could even go down a little more than that because we're looking at 2012 employment numbers, it would probably be around 4 million, but that could be a little less.
With 1 percent?
With 1 percent. Keep in mind, that would...
Is that 75 percent or is that 100 percent?
That's at about 75 percent collection, yeah. That's just on wages. I didn't take into account any net profits tax because looking at the city of Pikeville, that the percentage of what they receive on net profits tax is not very much, so I didn't include that.
Let me tell you what the city is this year of magistrate Dotson. They get $8 million on their 2 percent. Their population would have went down if they hadn't went out and annexed, and the annexed where they had the most jobs. And of course, magistrate Anderson and I became concerned and magistrate Johnson came concerned when they went up Island Creek and was going to take 255 homes in. And we had no way to control it as a county government, but they petitioned, they came into my office, I sent them to the local attorney, he advised them what they had to do, and 85 percent of the people told them they didn't want to go into city limits. They have been moving out in this county, taking the key spots away from the 90 percent of the people we would have to represent if we tried to get revenue in those areas. To me, those days are over and I've told the city that. They said, "Well, you can't stop it." No, we can't, but the people can. So as they try to ease up even towards on the South Mayo Trail, trying to go up and get the railroad, go up and try to get Wells Concrete, trying to go up and get Mountain Enterprises. And with what's going on out in the county, if we even in the future, now or in the future, even look at that type of a revenue stream, which county attorneys, we have the right to do under the statute, they would take up all the money. Now, there are no rural county incorporated governments. You have Fayette County and you have Jefferson, which took up two-thirds or more of the county. If you, and they were evidently looking towards a one government here, the city. But magistrate Harris got news for them, that's not how it works. In rural areas, the county is the dominant one. That's not how it works anywhere in America. So we're not here in a fight with the city or anybody else. We're here to solve a problem. When we started getting news of what was happening from Charles Carlton's research that we started a few months ago, when we saw the drop coming, not the big drop on the last quarter, we started having meetings. I had Jeannie to keep a record of them. We put in a in-house working committee for the court. We've had 12 meetings, 12 meetings, starting on April the 11th. That was a meeting in Frankfurt with Tony Wilder and Amy Barnes, getting a clarification on some options that we would have, on the options where we had sold the telephone building, where we was told on the telephone that it didn't qualify for us to use in our budget. And we said, "Well, we got some ideas that we want your general counsel to look at, that we think under this statute, our county attorney has advised us, that under that statute..." we think under this statute, our county attorney has advised us, that under that statute, that we can, that we can use that money." So, our committee loaded up, we went down to Frankfurt and had a meeting with, that's the office of local government, the governor's office of local government. And we said, "Here's the statute. Here's where we can blend this money in our budget next year, one-time money, one-time money." And once we made the presentation to them, all sitting there, all of the working committee, they agreed that we could use that money. So, then, then we, on the twenty-second, we had another meeting that we met with the treasurer and with Rhonda in my office, I met with her and Jeannie. And then on the twenty-fifth, we had another full meeting of the whole committee. And then on the twenty-fifth, we had another one. Then on the, on the twenty-fifth, we had a brief meeting, but John, John Doug and Jeannie made a presentation to us, and we bounced around different ideals that we had, that what we could do in regard to budget. Then we had another full-blown meeting, which was a very lengthy meeting of the, of this committee, and we made some decisions on recommendations and things that we could look at, and things we could start researching, and things we would get ready for, for this meeting and the next meeting, because this won't be the only meeting, there will be probably another meeting or two of this body. Then we, then, then we have another meeting on the twenty-ninth of April. Then we had another pretty long meeting, according to the notes that Jeannie has on here, that we, we had a in-depth discussion on research that had been done for us, that people that we would talk to in government, and trying to come up again with concepts and ideas to help us get a balanced budget. Held another meeting the very next day in regard to this. May the first, another meeting. Then we had another meeting on May the sixth. Then we got this meeting. But guess what? We have some information from Frankfurt, magistrate Harris gave us some information from Frankfurt yesterday in his conversation with Mr. Foley, the state local finance officer in the office of local government. And they had said that we had to use a formula on the last quarter. They said we had to use the formula on the last quarter. Charles tell me, they're quarter of a hind, but that's the last quarter that they said we had to use it on. That the formula was that we take four into that quarter, and to dust it by ten percent, and that gives us, the budget office, something to give us to start working from. But you had a twenty-nine percent drop in your income, and that's the reason you end up with this deficit that you got. It is, it is the magistrate Harris, which is an attorney, county attorney, just took a look at it, and looks like they're probably right. They don't have a right to tell us what quarter to use. You know, I have said for years, and that's to Madam Treasurer for years, why do we have all these lines in this budget now? And magistrate Harris, that's like you told Mr. Foley, that is because they approved the form of the budget, and that's all they do. There are two things on that statute they do, and that's one of them. And that's the reason you got this thick budget, and you got all these listed, and some of them don't even have figures in it, but they require you to put that in, in the budget, and that's all they do. So, we are going back to Frankfurt. Your working, your working committee for this court is going back to Frankfurt. Jeannie talked to them this morning. They're either going to see us Monday, or they're going to see us Tuesday. We have some questions for them. We have some questions if they're answered properly, and they have the, Tony Wilder was a county judge of Ball County, Damboll, for twelve years. He had the same responsibility I've had of all the six terms I've been here, going into six terms this time. He's done budgets. He understands, just like I do. He had told me that every county and coal county of Eastern Kentucky is, he don't know what they're going to do, but he said, "I can tell you this. As far as the law will let the office of local government," he said, "and this is cleared with the governor of the chair." He has said, the governor has told me that my instructions is to work with you all, under the statute, any way we can, to help you with information, with advice, of how we can end up with a balanced budget. I feel if we go down and we have certain categories of funds, that we know where they're at, if they will be understanding with us, that we won't have to go fully through this process, that we can come back at the meeting that Jeannie has set, and we will set the budget work session next week at Wednesday at ten or Thursday at ten, ever what, ever, ever what, or Wednesday at one, was that what it was?
Wednesday at one.
One, at one on Wednesday, or Thursday at ten. If it meets, magistrate Harris, if it meets your court schedule, so we'll look on your calendar.
Thursday would be fine.
Thursday would be fine.
Thursday at ten.
Thursday would be fine, and if that would meet your all's, and I'm not only talking to the county attorney and to magistrate Harris, but to all of you, if that meets your all's schedule, we will, we will have to have a session because we got some questions that Frankfurt has got to tell us. I said that-
Either it's fine with me, magistrate Murphy said one, one on Thursday was better.
But one on Thursday would be fine with us, wasn't it, Jeannie? We want to accommodate you all. Now, this last time on this meeting, we failed to accommodate magistrate Harris and had to move it up to this day, but we was glad to move it because he had something he already had scheduled. So, but that's when we, that's when we're going to have a discussion today. But we're not going to get into nitty-gritty because, folks, if we can go to Frankfurt, and we're going down, if they can give us, and if they will be understanding with us, we can, we, and I'm talking about the working committee working with the treasurer and the finance director, the experience that they have, the experience they have, first all of us have, and all of this court, what you have, we won't have to sit here and go through the turmoil that we have to go through to get a budget. We may, we may have to bleed a little bit, but we're not going to have to bleed if, if they will cooperate with us, because there are money that can be transferred, there are formula that, that we may be able to ease a little bit. We've been cautioned by the county attorney and by my chief of staff, Jeannie, that, Mr. Harris, that they didn't have the right to tell us, but we might all just listen a little bit because it may be good advice that they're, they're giving us, but they, they don't have to, we don't have to take that formula, we don't have to take fully the ten percent off. But when we do that, we're talking about picking up a lot of money that we would have to cut out of our, our budget, and to cause pain to people in this county who's already in pain, and cut the services. And we know that people expect us, as our elected officials, to provide them in solid waste, and, and, and right on and on roads and bridges, and you've heard Judge Hayes not dwell on that. But we want to have a discussion today and hear any concepts and ideals. We have met with our commissioners and directors. I want to commend every one of you. We have, as Judge Hayes said, we cut to the bone, but what did you all do to help us? You helped us when the budget ended this year. You cooperated. I know that it was a hardship when I put the five thousand dollars on you to get permission before you, you bought anything. I know it was a hardship and the way that things had been done, and when you change things, it's not popular. But to change the purchase order procedure, that no kind of employee could walk in anymore and buy anything, it had to be approved by commissioner, director. You all did that. We had a car over of one point two million dollars in our budget because of you all, of knowing what we was facing and understanding what we was facing when we come to this budget year. Magistrate Harris told me, said, "How much was that car over?" He said, "Was it one point two?" He said, "Right off the top of my head, it's say, that's what the state said, it's a car over, but add that to your three point three, and you can see where we'd have stood if it hadn't been for what you all did." That is figured in the budget, your one-time five hundred, or figured in the work they've been doing, trying to figure a way out to get a balanced budget. So, I think if we can go to Frankfurt, and we will be there either Monday or Tuesday, we'll be able to report back to you on Thursday, hopefully some good news, hopefully some good news. We know there are two serious issues. We have a meeting this afternoon of the working committee. We think there will be a third issue we can discuss with the governor's office of local government and their counsel that will help us not have as much pain for the people we represent. And so, that's all I have, and I want to move into a discussion, and here you all, you're all a part of this court, I'm a member of the court, I have one vote, just like you have one vote, and we, we work together as a body and try to come up with answers. And we, and so we'll start, any way you all want to start. If you got any ideas, concepts that you want us to take to Frankfurt with you, with us, we'll take them with us, we'll have a full discussion, we'll add it to our agenda. Jeannie has told them, I think, one or two things we want to discuss with them, so they can do their research between now and time we get down there, and they can, can start having a serious dialogue with the leadership of this county and the ones we have working on this for this body, and that's the in-house working group.
Judge, I, I'd just like to caution that even with the help that we might get with what you're talking about on the Frankfurt, there still is going to be a very, very serious shortfall in that budget. And I, I don't think, I don't want the public to think that there's an easy fix coming with the trip to Frankfurt.
No, we're just even the pain.
That even, you, you're going to, you can, you can put a little sap on the pain, but there's still deep cuts and hurts coming, even if all that fries.
Well, we don't-
I didn't want to, I didn't want the employees and the public and everyone else thinking that there was an easy fix coming next week when you go to Frankfurt.
And I didn't intend that to happen, but, but I wanted to tell the county attorney, if we can get the cooperation we think we can get, that it's certainly not going to be the pain that, that would be inflicted by the action that this body would have to, have to take to get a balanced budget.
I agree with you a hundred percent on that.
Because, let me say this, in our discussions, there will be a few million dollars. Now, it's not one to solve the total problem at all, but our discussions will include two and a half or more millions of dollars. Yes, yes, indeed. We had the meeting yesterday, it will be discussed now whether or not we could ever come, and we use that information we get as a body, that will be something else when we get back. And I appreciate, Mr. County Attorney, if you caution us and the people of this county. What I'm telling you is that we're just going to Frankfurt to try to ease the pain when we get back and begin seriously getting to the point we have a balanced budget. Go right ahead, magistrate.
Judge, I think we don't need to get into the nitty-gritty of everything today, throwing out this and that, and we don't need to until we find out what comes out of that meeting in Frankfurt. And I agree with Roland, too, there's still going to be some tough decisions to make.
Can we make some cuts?
But if anybody else has got anything to say, well, go ahead.
Magistrate Harris says he thinks that we ought to wait till the next meeting till we get this information to go into a full-blown discussion in regard to the budget, what's the feeling of the other magistrates, or any magistrate would have to say. And if that is a feeling of the court, we can adjourn, and then Jeannie has a work session set up this afternoon with the working committee, and we will discuss again with the county attorney and the working committee and, and the budget office up, from upstairs, and the committee of what we're going to discuss on Monday or Tuesday.
Judge, I'd like to say that we are in tough times, but it's never been easy since I've been here. Every year we have a tough budget, and we've always been able to work through it, and I just wonder about this one. And listening to your comments on the city and the county's budget, you know, in the future, if we could get our legislators and our senators to realize the problems that we're having, and maybe earmark a little more of the coal service money toward our budget-
What's left.
-on our debt services and things, I think that would be the, the solution. I know it can't happen this year, but in the future, I think that's our answer, to try to work toward getting some of our debt services paid for, that would take some of the pain. And a lot of people out in the county don't understand that we're going to take on a debt after June, I guess, or July, that we've not been, have to pay, and that's the hall of justice.
Four hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Four hundred and fifty-
We're taking on two hundred and thirty-nine thousand in debt, plus whatever the expenses that will not be reimbursed, less salaries.
Right.
So, I want the employees to know that these are debts that we've got to pay that we didn't have last year. And hopefully, you know, things will work out to where we can get a good budget and not be so painful on our employees. And, and you know, the occupational taxes is something that we don't want to see happen if, is any way possible, we can get around it, because the ones that are working now are the ones that are going to feel the effect on the occupational tax. And since January one, the people that's working have, have took on another responsibility, other check on their social security payments they're paying each, each month. That's, that's quite a bit of money, and then you put another tax on, on the people that's a working, then, you know, there's just about, it's going to be hard for them to make it. But I think we all need to just knuckle down and see what we can do to, to resolve this problem and work on it in the future. And if it takes cuts or whatever, then we've got to do it, you know? We're responsible for balancing the budget, which the other government agencies in the state and, and the federal seem like they can dodge that, but we as counties, we have to have a budget. And I, I just pray that we, as a court, can resolve it with your staff, and we won't have to do a whole lot of damage to our employees. And our insurance, you know, is another concern that we've got with our employees. We had to give them a, a pretty good cut last year, you know, we was able to give them a spend-down card, which helped, but on their deductible, I'm hearing a whole lot of complaints that when they go to the hospitals, that they just don't have the money to pay the-
Co-pay.
The co-pay, you know, they want it up front, and it's hard for them to, to make it, but maybe with John and Rhonda's and your staff's help, we can look at other insurances and see if we can come up with a better plan that will help our employees. That's all I have, thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we have our commissioners, directors here, and I know, Carl, I look at you, I'm looking straight down there, and I know you took a hit from the federal money that come to the state on senior citizen legislature, and then you got cut. And I know that, that maybe not this meeting, the next meeting, you will, you will want to talk to us as a body. You cut your days down at the centers out in the county, and you're sitting there with Eugene Gibbs, who is the chairman, the president of your, your local senior citizen. You all took your licks last year, you know, and I, I met Fuzzy out here yesterday, and he was talking about his deduct that he took. And I was, I was telling Fuzzy that, you know, the courts certainly wants to help the law enforcement, especially with the drug situation we've had, and we want to help our county clerk, but that is not statutory. I tell him, Fuzzy, we have to help the jailers, statutory, that we have to provide money for the jail, but, Carl, I know we won't today, but I know you and you other, you other people in your departments, you know, you all need to all- other people in your departments, you know, you all need to also have, get ready the next time to let us know, leave your feelings about your department, and, and as we, we got a decision to make as a body, all of us. And we, we want to be unanimous if we can, when we end this with a balanced budget, but you all have to run these departments. When it's over with, it falls to me from the court to keep a balanced budget on the Kentucky statute. I'm the fellow that the buck stops in there at my desk, that stops. I'm the one that the state's in and we're in a deficit budget, that I have the problem. I have not only the political problem, I have it with state government, of the requirements. They could come in and take over the finances of the county. And we all know in, in one county, Breathick County, closed their courthouse for six months. Closed the courthouse down fourteen years ago, when the federal court had a judgment against more than a million dollars, and the judge gave them a certain day to pay and they couldn't pay, they shut her down till the state come in and figured out a way six months later, moved the circuit court clerks out in the county, rent them another place, had a depository for their deeds, and went on and had no courthouse. So we have a burden on our shoulders, same as those people. I'll give this figure, railroaders had a hundred and twenty some many months ago, Shelby marked up, hundred and twenty. Well, the railroaders told me they had twenty last month. Coal trucks, Bobby Branham can tell you, we, we traveled all over this county. We saw three coal trucks in two days, and we was from Peter Creek to Elkhorn to Dorton, everywhere, we saw three coal trucks. So you can tell how bad it is and why we say our people are sitting around their dinner tables and having discussions just like we're having here today. So we are, we are, we, we're going to adjourn this meeting, it is, if not, we can't take any action here, any action by this body. We have to come into session at a special or regular physical court meeting, and we will have to do that. Once we come to a conclusion and get us a balanced budget, we hope to have a special meeting the next day and go ahead and get it approved and get this behind us and move on and govern this county and provide the services with what, with the money we've got to, to provide the services we need to provide. Thank, thank you all for attending. Thank the press for attending. We need to get this story out so people understand it. We appreciate it, we appreciate the transparency that Pike TV brings us to the people of this county, so they'll know what's going in in their government. Thank you all and God bless.